Well, good morning. I thank you all for coming by. A few things I wanted to share with you all. The big thing is apparently it's going to snow again. So we have already rescheduled our capital improvements program public hearing from tomorrow night, moved it on to Wednesday night. And we have rescheduled our day a bit, so we'll start tomorrow's agenda at 12:30. So hopefully the snow will hit Pennsylvania and not DC. But we don't want to put our residents through the challenge of worrying about how they're going to get here tomorrow, particularly for the public hearing, which is so important. So we've already made that change. So appreciate it if you get that word out to your community members. That's really important. We will do that on our own, of course, but we appreciate the press's help in that regard. A couple other things I just want to mention. I met the new superintendent of schools last week, Jack Smith. Seems like a nice guy. He's been a number of years in Calvert County. Obviously, that's not Montgomery County, very different kind of place. But he's had some international school experience, which is interesting, given the makeup of our community. And what is really great, I think, is his several years as deputy superintendent of the Maryland State School System. That shows a depth and breadth of his experience. That's going to bring a lot of value to us. In particular, Calvert County, that's Mike Miller's district, having a good relationship with Annapolis is really key to Montgomery County school system's success in terms of funding and just playing relationships. So I'm really pleased about that. I am reminded that, what I forgot to mention, actually, since it's going to snow, we've delayed the snow briefing because we want our guys out taking care of the snow rather than worrying about reporting to us. So that will be rescheduled sometime in March. And we'll do a full wrap-up of everything. We hope we won't, they won't need to be deployed so aggressively as they did previously, but of course, we'll see. And so if any of you have any better information about the snow, please let our people know about that. The other two things of note or of interest, we spent a lot of time last week in public hearings with the Westbard community. Relatively controversial master plan that proposes some standards and expectations for the redevelopment of that portion of Bethesda. If you know it, it's right where River Road starts coming into a more urban area. It is, quote, intersects with Little Falls Parkway. There's Whole Foods over there. And there's an interesting mix of existing development there right now. Fair number of industrial uses, some big buildings, and major parking lots. And what we've learned is that there's a stream that has been concreted over time that folks would like us to get opened up. There are some roadway configurations. And there's a property owner who's interested in a rather major piece of redevelopment there. So our challenge, like all communities, is how you balance all these competing interests and how it works out. We have, on the county, a real commitment on the council and countywide in terms of increasing our stock of affordable housing. Of course, that means more housing. And so how do you balance out the community's interests in seeing a better place, getting the private, in terms of Westbard's redevelopment, getting the private sector to pay for the roadway improvements and the stream valley improvements and the like? And at the same time, not overwhelming the adjacent communities. Very interesting conversation. We're dealing with a community whose master plan hasn't been addressed. And frankly, there's been no real major development there for 30 years. So this is a whole new community that we're dealing with, and we're having some interesting conversations about that. We'll have the first session in committee on that, I think it's February 29th, a couple weeks from now. So stay tuned. The staff report on that, evaluating what the planning board has recommended and how it fits in with our global transportation and education, capital needs and the like, will be out on the Thursday or Friday preceding that. So that's a way to follow along. You can link, you can look at what I think Glenn Orlin will be writing for us. And we'll be taking that up first because, of course, infrastructure and schools have been a big issue in that community. So we have that. And the other fun thing we're doing, it hasn't got much attention, and I meant to mention it last week, is we're confronting the internet world these days. We did, we've been dealing with the issues of Uber and Lyft in terms of transportation in the past year. Now we're moving on to rental transient housing, Airbnb. Councilmember Reamore introduced legislation last week that will make that legal in all parts of the county. Right now, we actually tax people who are providing Airbnb units, but it's technically not exactly legal under our land use rules. So that's going to be an interesting conversation here. And it's just going to be really interesting to see how that goes. We've already, we've had this challenge with the taxi industry and the world that they face that's been changed by internet ordering of vehicles and the like. How are we going to deal with a very popular Airbnb world? It's an issue all over the country, frankly. And so we're going to confront it here. So that's going to be very interesting. I think I, do we know when the public hearing for that is scheduled? We'll look up the public hearing date on that.
I believe it's March 8th.
March 8th? March 8th? At night, we'll be having a public hearing on that proposal. And then I expect that we may at least have a preliminary committee conversation about that in April. Our budget will get, will start dominating our work sessions really after March, so we won't be able to get all the way through it. But that's an interesting community conversation coming up. So you may want to pay attention to that. I believe Fairfax has just started dealing with, as well. Someone sent me something about that. So other than watching the skies for the weather, that's what I have for you. I don't know if anybody has any questions?
Yes, I do. Okay. So the meeting that will be in March, what is the term you're using? Air B and B?
Air B and, air B and B. It's B and B all squished together. You can Google it and you'll find out all about it.
Okay. You said there were issues with, or...
Yeah, wait a minute. You're a young person, so you should be using this when you go out, go around.
Okay. So you're not saying that Uber's not legal?
No, it's legal.
Okay. That's what I thought.
But we had some issues with how it, how we treat it in light of the fact that we have an already regulated taxi cab industry. Uber provides a similar service. But we locally can't regulate it in the same way. It's become a state issue. And Airbnb really hasn't taken the stage statewide, but it's a housing issue, which is a more local issue. So I don't know that the state would get involved anyways. But it's an interesting, interesting issue. I've used Airbnb all over the world. It's a great way to find an inexpensive, less expensive place to stay than a hotel in many cases. But, you know, there are pluses and minuses.
There are a number of people who work in transportation, either taxi services or Uber, who live in Montgomery County. Is there any concern that you have about the workers lately? People in New York have been complaining about low wages, looking for Uber specifically?
Well, that's, Uber regulation is not something that we do. That's sort of a public service commission issue, I believe.
What's the worst Airbnb experience you've had?
For me?
What was the worst Airbnb?
I haven't had a bad one.
Really?
Haven't had a bad one, no. All has worked out just fine.
Have we had any complaints in the county about people using it here and neighbors saying, ugh, you know, traffic coming in and out or use of space?
My staff tells me we've had three complaints. I know in some of the municipalities, it has started to be a question. How does this fit within our zoning ordinance of permitted uses? And it's a, apparently, it's not technically allowed. So, and you know, we've had this whole issue with accessory apartments and, you know, group homes, how many people can live in a house, that sort of a thing. And I would suspect, well, we'll see. I don't know what the community comment on this will be. It'd be hard for people who've done this elsewhere to raise an issue, but then you never know.
Back to the new school superintendent. And as you said, Calvert County, not like Montgomery County, I think it's a tenth of the size in school population, 73% white. We now have white as a minority here in the schools. Do you have concerns in that arena? And do you also have concerns about, and has anyone asked about, his contract as negotiated here versus what he had in Calvert?
Well, I have no knowledge as to what he has negotiated here. I understand that there were some issues with the Calvert experience. You know, that was a decision made by Calvert, and I'm sure our Board of Ed has vetted all I guess we all want to make sure that the superintendent has the capacity to deal with a much larger community of interest. And that's why I mentioned the state experience, I think, really fills out that background. I hope that his experience with, across the state, gives, has given him that extra capacity to deal with a community of our size and our shape. One, the things I've observed over the years, there's no simple solution to finding the right superintendent for Montgomery County. We have a demanding community. And you want someone with the capacity to deal with that. I think knowledge of the Maryland school system, though, and expectations across the state and dealing with those communities across the state is just a tremendous leg up in terms of understanding the needs statewide and how they translate locally, how we compare. And I think that's really important. And I was very struck when we met with him. He talked about making a commitment of being really quite hands-on in the schools that maybe have the most challenged communities to deal with. And I think that's really the number one thing in terms of academic performance. And he is, apparently has unparalleled credentials in the academic world. So I think that's tremendous. And I don't think he has a lot of ego on the line. I don't think he's going to have any trouble being strong where he needs to be strong and listening where he needs to listen.
Last week, county executive Leggett joined other county executives, Kemenetz and Baker, in criticizing Governor Hogan and his treatment of some of the largest jurisdictions in the state. Last week, when we talked to you and I asked you about the relationship with the governor, you said we're trying to get one. Are you seeing a change? I mean, he did turn around and give $15 million to Prince George's County on Friday.
Good! I hope you'll see it, we can see that and raise that this week. We're trying, we're trying. Part of it is, I think this is a community that the governor's less familiar with. He knows we're a pretty liberal, progressive community. And our job is to remind him of how invested we are in the kinds of things that he is invested in, which is job growth, infrastructure. I don't think there's any disagreement about those objectives. And I'm hopeful that we can improve our relationship or develop one.
Betty Francis passed away last week. Did you know her and how important was her work for Montgomery County, if so?
Betty Fran?
Scotland community?
Oh, I don't think it's Francis.
Betty Thomas.
Betty Thomas.
Thompson.
Betty Thompson. Yeah, I only met her once or twice. Last time I saw her actually was at the ribbon cutting for the opening of the New Scotland Recreation Facility. Really impressive lady who's fought for her community for many, many years. She was in a wheelchair with a caretaker. When we opened that, it was a year or two ago, I think. So, you know, she was a true community leader. We're very lucky to have had her and others like her, you know, fighting the good fight for a community that was pretty underserved and really didn't have a voice for itself. Scotland is a community that people are not that aware of, a very low-income community, low-income community right in Potomac. And we need to always be responsive to those needs and make sure the community at large is aware of our obligation to support them. And she was a great, great leader, yeah.
If I could go back to the new superintendent appointee, what are your impressions about his financial management experience? Because that's a significant role that the superintendent would have in proposing the budgets.
I have not, I'm not in a position to comment at this point on that. I have not gone over, I was not part of the vetting process with the Board of Ed.
Anything else you can tell us about the Westbard public hearings? You said the conversations were interesting, what you learned, or how it's been different from other sector plans? Especially for people who haven't been following it or who were not in those meetings.
Sure. Well, I think it is a community that's, that is learning about a world that it hadn't been part of previously in terms of the land use and development rules in Montgomery County, our processes. And, you know, we're trying to help them appreciate that a plan gets proposed by professional planners to the planning board. The planning board is a, is a number of community representatives who review those proposals. And then it comes to us, and it is now the county council's plan. And so some folks appeared to believe that it was all resolved, that it was all designed to benefit one particular property owner or not, which is not the case. But, you know, it's an education, learning experience for many of the community members. And it happens in any community where we're doing something where the community has not been engaged in the same way previously. And in this case, it's been 30 years.
You mentioned that, Lisa, I think I remember you saying that you're hoping that private donors would help contribute to, I'm not sure which part of the process, like just in this meeting now, in terms of Westbard?
Well, in Westbard, there are a number of capital improvements that everyone agrees, agrees need to be made in terms of road realignment, improving, taking, getting the, they call it daylighting, a stream that goes through there, which are expensive projects. And those are the kinds of things that we would expect any project that is going through redevelopment to contribute to.
What is the impact of the new zoning ordinance on what's happening with this plan? I don't really know. Is it, are there...
The impact of the new zoning ordinance, well...
Yeah, there are things that are in play now because of what you did to the zoning ordinance that are impacting directly on what's controversial.
Well, some of the, some of the new zones, and we haven't gotten into the weeds on it yet, so I can't quote you chapter and verse, but largely, the new zones have been designed to create more flexibility. So, and it's interesting now, that's creating some confusion. What's not clear, for example, if you zoned, zone property now under our new commercial zones, they provide for a mix of housing and retail and, or commercial. And the question is, technically, you could run the numbers and say X number of residential could thereby, residential units could be constructed under this scenario. And then you could run the numbers and say Y amount of office could be constructed under this scenario. But there are many assumptions that go into the analysis because usually, it's a balance. And you couldn't have all one and all the other. There would have to be some mix, or some very, say, some very modest retail and a lot of, and far more residential, or vice versa. A large, a larger commercial component and a very small residential component. Now, those all affect predictions as to what, like, school capacity might be or road capacity issues might occur. But with the new zones, it's, nothing is certain. Used to be, it's all commercial or it's all residential. And then you had a better sense for what those numbers might be.
Does that add to people's sense of anxiety?
Well, it's not clear. It's just not clear because we don't know what's clear until a project actually comes to fruition. Someone proposes something, and then you see the mix of potential development. So what our planners do is they try to, they tend to go to largest-case scenarios or worst-case scenarios. But that doesn't happen. But, you know, there is a community perception that perhaps it would. And that is the challenge as we go through, and that's the new zoning ordinance challenge. We don't have quite the precision in, not that we're so pride, so precise to begin with, but we really don't have the precision in projection that we might have used to, might have had under previous zoning terms. And, you know, it's far more, when you're talking about mix of development, we don't know what the mix is going to be. We create an envelope in which that can occur, but the reality can be very, very different. But you can't really say. So when they're saying, they give you a height number even, well, it could be that tall here, but it could be this tall there in the same project. It's not an overall, necessarily an overall height that everything would reach, but maybe. And no one wants to, we just don't know. And so people tend to respond to, you know, the most that could conceivably happen under any one scenario. And it's not at all clear.
People don't look at 30-year horizons and all. They look at, you know, what's going to happen in two years or three years. And these massive plans are always...
Yeah. Well, and that's, and that's one of the challenges with the planning world. It is, it's just a plan, projection, a vision. The implementation is very, very different. But people see it all as happening tomorrow or in the next couple of months. And that is not the case. And frankly, most of this county is in this category of having the capacity to do far more development if the property owners really want to do that and if they could really satisfy all the, all the traffic and, and schools tests. But they don't, for whatever reason. But people react to the concept that it's all going to happen tomorrow. But correctly, it's a 30-year collection of potential options, subject to, you know, 40 footnotes, if this, if that, the other thing. So it's hard, that's a lot of detail. It's hard for, for us to get it out there in a way that the community absorbs it. And so a lot of, what we're always dealing with in planning issues is what's the future going to bring? And who's going to make those decisions? And how exactly is it going to work? And regrettably, when we don't have precise answers, that frustrates some folks. Yeah, that's what it is.
You mentioned low-cost, low-income housing, sorry, affordable housing. Why is that being looked at as opposed to, like, commercial uses?
Well, in the mixed-use zones, housing is one of the categories of uses that is permitted.
Yes, but why was that chosen?
Well, we do that in the new mixed zones. The new, the new zones permit a mix of housing, what we will do, and commercial. And we will establish some numbers associated with what, what kind of mix in terms of different uses that could occur. And affordable housing is a key objective of this council, generally speaking, which is to encourage more affordable housing throughout the county. That means more housing. Under our rules, a certain percentage of housing that is created, that new housing is required to be subject to our moderately priced dwelling unit rules. And that controls the rent and the price for a certain percentage.
But that brings them, that, so if it's, the purpose is to decide be housing, as the county executives had said, it is, would be appealing to bring more business into Montgomery County, so any of those that are housing could not be used for bringing commerce in...
It's a mix. So there also is a commercial element associated with these zones.
And lower, affordable housing means lower-income residents?
Well, I mean, you know, I think the limit on the income limit is in those 60s, $60,000 that people make to be eligible for these programs. It depends on family size and the lot and the like. We have a whole set of calculations. There are also situations where we underwrite some of the rent for families of more limited means. But we're not talking about the poorest of the poor when we're talking about affordable housing. We're talking about what, yeah, average school teacher makes, employees of businesses. We heard a lot, a certain amount about that the other night, the Westbard plan.
Have you heard anything about Montgomery College and their childcare centers?
Just heard about it.
What can you tell us?
Let's see here. Apparently, the college operates three early learning centers. There's one at each campus. The facilities at Rockville and Tacoma Park campuses need capital improvements, but the programs don't bring in enough revenue to pay for those. It was designed to serve college students. Apparently, not many of the students in the college are using it for that purpose. It's more of a community benefit right now. And so the college is looking at closing two of those sites, not the one up in Germantown. And the college is also working with our Department of Health and Human Services to find Head Start locations for kids who are in that program.
The next fiscal year is what they're thinking?
You'll have to talk to Susan Madden over at the college for more details.
So Head Start is only a portion of the childcare centers? And that, the Head Start programs was funded by the Health and Human Services Department? Is that correct?
Well, I've just told you what I know. Any more questions, you have to direct to Susan Madden of Montgomery College.
Did you hear why the two locations are closed?
As I told you, they need capital improvements, but the programs don't bring in enough revenue to fund those.
So the county couldn't help with those?
Well, we'll see what happens. But that is what we've just heard today. That's just the college's story. We were about to do, well, we just rescheduled tonight's public hearing, tomorrow night's public hearing on the capital improvements program. Certainly will take up all capital improvements in the course of the budget, starting in, largely in March, I think. And end of February?
We're going to start getting into some of the committee work in the end of February.
End of February, yeah.
Montgomery, excuse me, the Tacoma Park City Council has expressed frustration with Tacoma Park, at least campus of Montgomery College, about how the capital improvements program, it doesn't seem to be disclosing information until it's close to having to be approved. Do you have any thoughts on that, what's included in it?
Again, I have them, I'm not aware of that particular problem. Montgomery College is pretty accessible. Montgomery College is pretty accessible. I think they can, need to check. I, I don't know what the problem is exactly. There are ways to, usually to get information. They're pretty simple. Most of these are just, personal conversations are good and as, I think most of their stuff is online, just as ours is.
Okay, could you remind us again, when were you briefed? You said you just heard about the Montgomery College childcare centers?
I just heard about it. In the past hour and a half.
Oh, how?
We heard that there was going to be a question.
So this, you weren't, Montgomery College didn't contact you?
No.
So you, had you heard about this at all before?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much. And let's, like I said, if you get any information about the snow, let us know.